Okay, we will reconvene the special meeting. Mr. City Attorney, is there any final action to report out?
No final action tonight, Madam Mayor.
Then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, with the clerk please call the roll.
Council members Rathal-
Here.
Roarbaugh-
Here.
Kozlowski-
Here.
Leary-
Here.
And Aquino-
Here. And if you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, any agenda updates?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to business from the floor or on any agenda item, please fill out a blue speaker card at the back of the room, hand it to the city manager over here at the end of the dais, and the clerk will call you up at the appropriate time. We do give everybody three minutes. So if you can keep your comments short and sweet, that is much appreciated. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody who wants to speak from business from the floor?
You have two requests to speak this evening under Business From the Floor. Our first speaker will be Michael Harris. Come on down, Michael. Michael will be followed by Bonnie London. Landon.
Good evening, y'all, Mayor, Council. You know, it's a blessing always to be here. And I come with, the best thing a man can have is women that are good friends. And I think it was, no, I know it was Alexander Dumas. He said, "Men's minds are raised to the level of the women they associate with." So I got two good ones with me today. So the idea is that, as some of us historians know, this is like this crazy time to celebrate the Civil War, 160 years of the Civil War. And if you ever get a chance, you should like spend a little time on just one of the battlefields, not one of the gory ones, because that might be too much for you. But that was the path to get to Juneteenth was a bloody Civil War. And this year is the 25th anniversary of celebrating Public Juneteenth here in Folsom. And it's a blessing, it's a curse, but it's something that... Well, my great-grandfather was in the military. My grandfather was in the military. My father was in the military. And I got the long straw. And my two brothers, they didn't have to go because I went. I'm an Army veteran. And so Juneteenth is near and dear to my heart. My grandpa's from Texas, and I still know how to cook, you know, two-day brisket slow and easy. And it's real good. So I'm gonna leave these and... I'm not gonna talk about the monkey in my back right now. It's the ongoing challenge with state parks about what we're gonna finally do with the 1840 to 1854. You know, they spending millions of dollars to kind of like rewrite history or figure out how to way to tell it without telling it. So I'm gonna leave that alone. Y'all wanna say anything today? Say what you want to say.
We hope that you guys would support us on our event for Juneteenth coming up.
And it's a blessing because it's a Title V holiday, meaning federal government is paid holiday. Various jurisdictions around the state, 58 counties, 100 cities with 100,000 people. And unfortunately, because the state has not aligned itself with 22 other states with the Title V holiday, I get to go all around the state and like do this same type of thing, encourage people to make it a paying holiday. But the good thing is, we're gonna have fun and continue doing what we do year-round, is celebrate the blessing that we all have by living here and in and around Folsom. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for coming out.
Okay, your next speaker will be Bonnie London.
Good evening, Bonnie.
Hi there. My name is Bonnie London, and I'm new to the Library Commission here. I'm honored to be a council, I'm honored to be appointed by Councilmember Leary and grateful for the opportunity to serve. I've been advocating and supporting libraries for 10 years now. Folsom's library is a shining star, and it's one that many look up to and admire. For those who don't know, Folsom was part of the Sacramento Public Library system until 1992, and it was closed due to budget cuts. The city of Folsom reopened it in 1993 as a municipal library. And back in the 90s, it was really small and housed in a strip mall just off of East Bidwell. But with vision, strong leadership, dedication, and community support, the Folsom Public Library has flourished under local control. And the new library built in 2007 is a source of great civic pride and envy throughout the region. In addition to all the great programs and services the library provides, it's also an extremely wise and efficient use of public funds. Public libraries are economic engines that deliver a positive return on the funds invested in them to benefit the residents and the communities. Every library institute, which is a national nonprofit, has a funding map to view each library's return on investment, so you can see and compare other libraries in your area. In our region, the return on investment is between $3 to $8, and the Folsom Library is the top performer in the area. For every dollar invested in Folsom's library, there's a return of $8.91 of savings and benefits to the community. These include direct benefits such as free access to materials, resources, programming, and services, and indirect benefits like literacy rates, job skills, and community engagement. During periods of recession and economic downturn, the need for library services become even greater as people turn to libraries when their budgets tighten and they seek resources to strengthen their economic well-being, such as resume building, improving digital literacy skills, job training, and materials to advance learning. I want to thank the City of Folsom's library director, Thomas Grunison, council members, and city staff for having the vision and commitment to build, develop, and grow a library which beloved, which is beloved and serves the Folsom community extremely well. As a library lover who's worked with different libraries in the region, the Folsom Library is a shining beacon and a model of excellence to guide others. And I speak from personal experience. I was part of an ad hoc committee to save a neighboring library, and we used Folsom as an example to lead the way. I'm happy to report, we were able to save that library, and it's now thriving too. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Okay, next item, please.
Okay, your next item will be scheduled presentations. And your first presentation is a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming April 13 to 19 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Folsom.
Okay, so we have four proclamations. I've asked my colleagues to help present these. And once you are done presenting it, if you, you and your group would look toward the back of the room to Andrew Eggers in our Communications Department, he's gonna take a photo.
All right, I'll have the communications supervisor and the dispatchers come on down and join me.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you all. I'll hand you this proclamation here. And tonight, we have a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming April 13 to 19, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Folsom. Whereas when our citizens experience crisis, the men and women of the city of Folsom Police Dispatch Center are responsible for answering their call and dispatching emergency services and resources to help save lives and property. In 2024, Folsom's public safety dispatchers handled 85,658 telephone calls. They created and monitored 60,388 incidents. It's amazing. Oh, it gets even better, it gets even better. And in 2024, the Folsom's communications dispatchers answered over 99% of all 911 calls in 15 seconds or less. And whereas Folsom's public safety dispatchers contributed substantially to the relentless pursuit of criminal behavior and fostering of positive relationships with our citizens. Now, therefore, I, Justin Rathal, the Vice Mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13 to 19 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Folsom. And I want to extend our gratitude to Folsom's communications dispatchers for their dedicated service to our community, diligence, and commitment to keeping our city and citizens safe. Thank you.
Gather real quick for a photo.
Would you guys like to say a few words, or? Grab a quick photo.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, next is item number two. This is a proclamation proclaiming April 22 as Earth Day, which will be celebrated on April 26. So can I have our senior civil engineer, Ryan Neves, senior environmental specialist, Mackenzie Jones, and admin assistant, Jennifer Theot? Did I say that right? Yeah. Hi, guys. Here, I'll hand this to you.
Thank you.
You look very nice. Proclamation proclaiming April 22 as Earth Day, celebrated on April 26, 2025. Whereas Senator Gaylord Nelson and student activist Dennis Hayes organized the first Earth Day rallies on April 22, 1970, across the United States, which signaled that protecting the environment is an important goal of the American people, creating the modern environmental movement and landmark pieces of environmental legislation in the United States. And whereas Earth Day has evolved into the world's largest civic event, uniting people across 192 countries in a shared celebration of our planet with this year's theme, "Our Power, Our Planet", Folsom proudly joins the worldwide effort on April 26, 2025. And whereas, the city of Folsom recognizes that an environment free of pollution increases property values and enhances economic vitality, protects native species, maintains air and water quality, and beautifies our community. And whereas, the city of Folsom recognizes the efforts of our city staff to comply with state and federal environmental regulations that protect our community and natural resources for future generations, not a hard, not an easy feat, I'm sure. The city of Folsom has adopted a five-year strategic plan with specific goals of establishing a plan to transition to a full electric fleet by 2035 and conducting a full inventory of greenhouse gas emissions. And the city, and whereas, the city of Folsom desires to share information with the public about sustainability efforts and inspired stewardship of our distinct natural environment. Now, therefore, as Anna Roarbaugh, as your council member, on behalf of the rest of the Folsom City Council and our mayor, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2025, as Earth Day, which will be celebrated on April 26 with Earth Day volunteer opportunities and a community festival at Prospector Park at 4578 Sparrow Drive. I hope you all can come. Proclaim this eighth day of April 25. So thank you to our staff members. Do you guys wanna say anything?
Go ahead, Madam. You can also use that, that other microphone with a handheld, if it's easier.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Roarbaugh and City Council. We're very excited to bring the second annual Earth Day event to the city of Folsom. Prior to last year, the city had multiple separate events held in the spring and programs run by different departments, including Creek Week cleanups, Trails Day, Arbor Day, volunteer events, and recycling education and outreach. And at our inaugural Earth Day event last year in 2024, we combined them into a more cohesive and collaborative event that we are thrilled to be able to hold again. This year, we've moved the event from in front of City Hall to the newly completed Prospector Park south of Highway 50 and expanded our Earth Day celebration from two to four hours.
Let's not trip, okay? Something I wanna just recognize is the history of Earth Day. So as councilmembers said, the first Earth Day was held April 22, 1970, as a day of action to draw attention to pollution, environmental degradation, and the need for environmental oversight. Over 20 million Americans demonstrated in different cities across the country that day. This led to landmark environmental legislation and is now recognized as the birth of the American environmental movement. In the 50 years since Earth Day, the day has become widely celebrated across the globe as a day to recognize both, both the environmental movement but raise awareness for the continued protection of the earth for future generations. The city of Folsom is very proud to celebrate Earth Day.
Our Earth Day event is only 18 days away, on Saturday, April 26. For the volunteer morning portion of the event, more than 300 volunteers will complete multiple community projects around the city, such as creek cleanups, ladder fuel removal, tree care, and beautification at the zoo. In the afternoon, the Earth Day festival will include educational and interactive booths from city departments and environmentally focused businesses and organizations. We have many new booths this year, including the Eldorado National Forest and the American River Conservancy. Event details can be found on the city website under Earth Day, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you all.
Okay, next will be item number three. This is a proclamation of the city of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day.
This is Amy Nunez. She is our city arborist and works hard every day to help keep our city covered with a tree canopy and helping neighbors keep their trees growing and healthy. So this proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom is encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day. I'll let Amy hold that up for you. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting and nurturing of trees. And whereas, in 1907, President Theodore Roosevelt proclaimed this as a national time to plant and nurture trees. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and will be celebrated in Folsom on Saturday, April 26, 2025. And whereas, trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature citywide, catch rainwater, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, caring for our existing trees is one of the most important and often overlooked ways to foster a vibrant urban forest. And whereas, the city urban forester, in partnership with volunteers and the Sacramento Tree Foundation, will be nurturing a grove of sapling oak trees through the application of mulch along the Willow Creek Humbug Trail to ensure a healthy, viable future for our city's urban forest in celebration of Arbor Day. Now, therefore, I, Barbara Leary, councilmember for District 4, on behalf of our mayor, Sarah Aquino, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Folsom and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, planting a tree of their own, or joining in our Arbor Day event. And further, I urge all citizens to enjoy the cool shade of trees and promote the well-being of this and future generations as Folsom becomes a Tree City, USA for the 19th year in a row. Proclaim this eighth day of April, 2025.
So yes, just as the proclamation says, trees are crucial infrastructure for our city. And one of the surest ways that we can contribute to the collaborative initiatives going on statewide to increase canopy cover for our communities is to actually help grow the trees we already have. So on April 26, in partnership with Earth Day and with the help of the Sacramento Tree Foundation, we're going to be tending to a grove of native saplings off the Willow Creek Trail. And also doing some, we're gonna be doing mulching, we're gonna be doing some watering, pruning, and also educating some volunteers on cultural practices that they can take home to help their own trees thrive. So anyone interested in learning a thing or two about growing trees and helping us grow our urban forests are encouraged and welcome to join us. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, our next presentation will be item number four. This is a proclamation proclaiming April 6 through the 12 as National Library Week in the city of Folsom.
Last but not, last but not least, we'd like the Friends of the Folsom Library, come on all up. Bonnie, come up. Tom, Vijay, come on up. If there are any other commissioners from the library in the audience, come on up. We want y'all. You're gonna have to get your wide lens, Andrew. Okay, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming April 6 to 12, 2025, as National Library Week in the city of Folsom. Whereas, the Folsom Public Library leads the county of Sacramento with the most visits, the greatest number of checked-out items, and the highest program attendance of any library location in the county. And whereas, libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire literacy, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and engage in new possibilities. And whereas, libraries nurture young minds through Storytime, STEM programs, and literacy initiatives, fostering curiosity and a love of learning that lasts a lifetime. And whereas, libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations, connecting the dots to maximize resources, increase efficiency, and expand access to essential services, strengthening the entire community. And whereas, libraries empower job seekers, entrepreneurs, and adult learners by providing access to resources, training, and opportunities to support career growth and economic success. And whereas, libraries serve as vibrant community hubs, connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas, libraries provide free and equitable access to books, digital tools, and innovative programming, ensuring that all individuals, regardless of background, have the support they need to learn, connect, and thrive. Now, therefore, I, Sarah Aquino, mayor of the city of Folsom, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through 12, 2025, as National Library Week in the city of Folsom and extend our gratitude to the Friends of the Folsom Library and our dedicated volunteers and staff. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library, explore its resources, and celebrate the many ways it draws us together as a community. Proclaim this eighth day of April, 2025. And if you haven't been to our library recently, you can check out more than books. There are games, and passes to state parks, and bocce ball equipment, and pickleball equipment. And there's just all kinds of things to explore there. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you very much. On behalf of the Friends of the Folsom Library, I'm honored to be able to accept this. And in addition to what Bonnie mentioned earlier about the intangible benefits from the library, there are so many. But most of all, it's a magical place that makes people happy. You can go, and everybody's there, smiling, very happy, getting free books and, and learning. And it's just awesome when you go and you see little kids so excited for Storytime that they're waiting outside 10 minutes before the library opens, and they can't wait to get in the door. So I invite you all to celebrate National Library Week with us. And come to the library. If you don't have a library card, it's free. You can come get one. If you don't have time to read a real hardback book, you can get an audiobook and listen to it in the car. There's something for everyone. Bring your kids to Storytime, or to the Engineering Club, or to the Lego Club. All that's on this week. So please come by. Did you want to say anything?
I just would like to thank the community. The Friends of the Folsom Library bookstore is based on donations. And we have wonderful, wonderful readers in Folsom, and they are kind enough to donate. And that keeps us keeping books at a very low price. Our goal is to get books into hands. And so I thank you as the public for supporting us. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. We need to take a picture, so we might need to get a few people down in front. Call the next item, please.
Okay, our next item this evening is gonna be a presentation from Heart of Folsom regarding the 2025 Winter Shelter.
Good evening, babe, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, our new city manager, City Council. It's good to be here in front of you again. And thank you to all the city staff who is here tonight as well. You'll hear more about yourselves later as I go through this. But the Folsom Winter Shelter, we just finished year eight of that. January 2nd to March 9th, we ran nine and a half weeks. Next year, we'd love to run 10 and a half weeks, if we can staff that. Because great things happened this year, and we would, we'd love more of that. The purpose of the shelter is to firstly, provide shelter, food, safety, and compassion to the guests who come from the unhoused community in Folsom. The second thing is just building trust and community. Many of these people, trust and that sense of community is not something that they experience a lot. And the kind of magic that happens at the shelter when we all come together is really an important part of that. And I'll share a story a bit later about that. The third thing is to connect guests with local resources. We have three nonprofits in Folsom that work with unhoused folks. Heart Transitional Housing is sort of the other half of what Heart does, where we have seven living units and a case manager, and we work with folks to help them get jobs, transportation, what they need to move ahead and get properly housed more permanently. Jake's Journey Home works with folks out in the field. And Powerhouse Ministries has their day center, along with housing options as well with programs. So that's kind of the three main thrusts of why we do what we do. People in Folsom are the winter shelter. You'll see a number of logos and signs up there. The whole process begins with about 20 Heart leaders who plan, beginning in the late summer, and lead then 90 additional volunteers with Heart who work the entire season. Most people do a shift a week, or a shift or more a week, with a shift taking an hour to three hours at the most. So we spread the work around of making this all happen for folks to feel safe and cared for. 10 groups were involved this year in hosting it overnight. It's 200-plus volunteers involved with that. We have faith communities primarily involved in the city. This year, Rotary Clubs joined us. It was great. We had the Evening Rotary Club, Lunch Rotary Club, and Morning Rotary Club. Thank you, Justin, for being one of the leads for that. And that was wonderful. It was wonderful to work with them, and I think it was a good experience for them and a great experience for us and our guests. And so we hope to continue that. We had six shelter locations this year because we have a couple of places where we're able to use their, their site, Oak Hills Church in particular, and Lakeside, for more than one week and let others come in and do the hosting. So that's our kind of key pieces of putting it together. We also link arms with some others across Folsom. We have now three restaurants that provided dinner weekly. That Damn Place provided a dinner weekly. Mr. Pork Events did. And then joining us this year, Bacca's House also did. And Anna Porna, which is an extension or a piece of the Indian Association of Sacramento, provided meals on day week, making the work lighter and, and food really lovely for, for everyone there, the volunteers and the guests. Hampton Inn has lent us a van for the last seven years. And this year, they actually donated the van to us. So it is now ours to use perhaps somewhere in our transitional housing program as well. And District Church lends us a shower trailer for the entire season, which is a huge benefit. We all know the wonderful feeling of a clean, a good, warm shower. And our guests are just like us. And so that's a gift from them to us that's really significant in what we do. I already mentioned Jake's Journey Home and Powerhouse. But also the city of Folsom, thank you to everyone involved with supporting what we do for unhoused folks here. I want to point out particularly the police department, and particularly the hot team, that- they see people out there, they can say, hey, there's a shelter, 5:00 PM, Upper Rodeo. You know, you want to be there. And they had all the information that they needed. And then on our side, we were able to contact them if we were concerned about someone, a potential guest possibly, and just get their input and insight on that. So super helpful to us. So thank you for that. Thank you for the Police Department. The other group is Kelly Gonzalez and the Parks and Rec Department, because we do intake at Upper Rodeo. It has been such a gift and made such a difference to, as soon as guests come in through the gate, that we can shelter them, that we have a place out of the wind and the cold, and the rain, if it's raining, and that they feel safe right away as we're interviewing them and all of that sort of thing, before we actually take them to the shelter. So just want to really shout out to those two particular groups. A little bit in statistics, we were open for 66 nights. We served 64 guests in total. Some came one night, some came 60 nights. Our total guest nights was 695, which is pretty typical for us. Average guest per night was 10 and a half. This year, weather-wise, we had a high number of very cold nights, less than 45 degrees, many of them less than 40 degrees. So 46 out of the 66 nights were very cold. So not as much rain this year as we had last year, but cold and windy. So still really wonderful to get folks out of there. Our census was overall two-thirds men and one-third women, and our ages ranged from 24 to 76, which again, pretty typical for us. Oh, sorry about that. I have one more screen. Not sure what happened to it. But I wanted to share a few stories. The first thing that we do at the shelter and happened was trust-building. And so I want to share just an older woman who has been in Folsom quite a long time, and has come to the shelter in previous years, but has not stayed very many nights during the year. She came almost double the amount that she's come in previous years. And I think people encouraged her before she came over to intake, and people there encouraged her that she would be safe in the shelter. And it really had an effect on her, that she felt she could stay, and she did stay far more than she's ever been in there before, in that community, in that safe space, feeling safe when she doesn't normally. She feels very vulnerable. So the trust-building is just a big, important piece of it. Employment reconnection and housing. We, early in the season, had a gentleman who had been in the trucking business in Southern California come to the shelter, and he wanted to get back to that. He had been there working, things had fallen apart. He had moved up here because he had family, and he wanted to get back to that. So as we learned about him, he needed glasses in order to pass a test to be able to be a truck driver again. We got glasses for him. We reconnected him, helped him reconnect with his employer, previous employer in Southern California, and provided transportation for him to get back down there. And he was super grateful both for having a place to stay while he was with us, as well as us helping him get his life back on track. We also knew the end of the shelter had a woman able to find employment again in her field and find a room for rent in Citrus Heights. So she was moving on to housing and work. So that's, those are things we love to be able to help people with. Transitional housing, Heart, as I said, has a transitional housing program. We don't always have units available when the shelter is running. Sometimes everybody's just in the midst of their program, and we don't have them. But we did have some openings appear this year, so three men actually went into Heart Transitional Housing, and all three of them are doing well. One is nearing completion, it looks like, and ready to move on up and out. So we were grateful to be able to do that. Near the end of the shelter, we had a woman move into Powerhouse Ministries Women and Children's Center, which was just a delight. You guys are familiar with that program, I know. So I wanted, on behalf of kind of many guests at the shelter who expressed verbally their appreciation on what it means to be inside in a community, together with people who care about them, I want to share an email that she wrote to some of the leaders of the shelter, just a couple bits of it, so that you get a sense of kind of what the shelter is like for folks. And she's very eloquent. She's a good writer. So she says, "When I first walked through the doors of the shelter, I was lost. I had spent so long feeling invisible, like I was just another face in the crowd, another person society had given up on. But here, you made me feel something I hadn't felt in a long time, human. You greeted me with kindness, no judgment. You called me by my name, looked me in the eyes, and treated me like I mattered. And that simple act alone, that changed everything for me. Because of you, I found the courage to start over. Because of you, I had a safe place to lay my head at night. Because of you, I got up each morning with a little more hope than the day before. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for your kindness, your patience, your compassion. Thank you for reminding me that people still care. You don't just provide shelter, you provide home, even if it's only for a little while." And sometimes that's exactly what a person needs to find their way back to themselves. So I pass that on to everyone who worked at the shelter, supported the shelter. City of Folsom, thank you on behalf of us volunteers and guests for your support.
Thank you, Beth. We know this requires a tremendous amount of work and coordination, so thank you for taking that on, that role every year. And thank you to the Heart Board and all of your volunteers. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Leary?
Yeah, thank you for all of the work that you do. It's amazing to hear some of these stories, and I'm glad you came in to tell us about them tonight. I just wanted one clarification, and this is just so maybe you can broadcast some information that other people in the audience or watching this on TV can pick up, because you say Upper Rodeo. And can you be more specific about that? So if someone comes across someone in need that's looking for shelter, they could give them an address or a more specific direction?
The address.
Because, you know, a lot of people are transient, they're going through town, but they still need shelter.
Right. Well, we only run in the winter.
Right, I understand that. That's another question.
Yeah, the address of the Upper Rodeo Gate is an interesting one. I'm not sure, I've really not got a really great response. But if you're at the Folsom Library and you go straight across the park and not, that's where we are, at the Gate Upper Rodeo, on Stafford Street. That's generally the best, generally if you put a number on it, you end up at the Zoo or somewhere close.
So it would be past the library on Stafford and down the hill?
No.
Or up, still up the hill?
Still up the hill.
Before you go down the hill?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Yep, yeah.
That's all.
Right next to the Maintenance Yard. I think the Maintenance Yard is right there at Stafford, right? So you just go.
Okay, great. And then is there any possibilities of having some heat shelters in the summer? I don't know if you've all talked about that, or, you know, because we've had a lot of days where it's 110, 115, et cetera. And I'd like to know if there's, and this may be another group altogether that would take this on, but I'm just wondering what the options are out there for that.
Yeah, that, I don't know. For us, we're all volunteer-led and run and everything, and the winter shelter and our transitional housing is as much as Heart can hold at the moment. But I don't know the city...
The city hosts cooling centers when the temperature is above a certain degree. It's not overnight, but it's kind of during the peak heat hours.
Great. And can you tell everybody where that's at? Or is that a moving target?
A moving target.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reba?
Yeah. A couple of years ago, when you presented, you, I appreciated the data, but you also presented how many people you had in the shelter from Folsom. Do you have that information, this last year?
We don't. I mean, it's self-reported and not very meaningful. I would say this season, we had, we had more people who had been here a long time. We had people who had been here five years and longer, about a third, about a third less than two months, and about a third spread across that in-between. So, yeah, so that's about what it was, self-reported from them. So...
So not everybody in the shelter is from Folsom, correct?
Correct, because I don't even know what that means, honestly.
From Folsom?
To say from Folsom. So I mean, they were born here.
Yeah, they lived here for a while, they became homeless, whether they were in Folsom, or maybe they've been in Folsom for a long time, for further reasons. So you don't track where they're coming from? Like if they're coming, okay.
No, we don't.
Okay.
No, at our intake center, we're really concerned, most concerned, that they're ready to be inside for a night in a community that is going to go well for them and for everyone. So that's kind of the primary thing that we do in the bit of time that we have in the evening.
Vice Mayor Raythel?
It's a big lift. I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate all that you guys do.
Hey, you're welcome. Thanks for being part of it.
Keep up the good work.
All right, we will.
All right. Thank you all for being here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you all. See you out there.
Bye-bye.
Okay, our next item is item number six. This is the Folsom Plan Area Semiannual Report.
Pam Johns, your Community Development Director. And over the last six and a half years, the Community Development Department has been providing regular reports about development activity in the newest area of our city, the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan located south of Highway 50. This report is highlighting key activities, development-related, within this area of the city. And we started doing it kind of quarterly, once development went vertical, and then we adjusted that to about a six-month period. And this evening, we have an abbreviated presentation, a little bit different than what we've done in the past. And we're proposing a new approach to how we do this moving forward, where we actually provide development information about what's happening citywide. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that, and then after some planning highlights, I'll turn it over to our City Engineer, Rebecca Neves, to finish it out. So just a reminder that the master planning, the city voter's decision to annex this land and master plan this community started well over 25 years ago, and there was a lot of planning work and activity to make this community a reality and a part of the City of Folsom. When the backbone infrastructure started to support development down in this area around 2016, there wasn't, there weren't a lot of people kind of driving down into and around this area. But when the houses were, the land was subdivided consistent with the master plan, and houses were approved and started going vertical, that's what we say when you see the sticks come out of the ground, that's when we started reporting out to the City Council. The first home was occupied in 2018 and was a pretty big celebration in the community for, you know, a long time coming. So within the next few years, most of the development throughout the city was happening in this part of the city. And so we highlighted, you know, planning activities, site development activities, building activities in this area. And we made sure that we have a website that keeps the community current, not just about what's happening today, but where you can find historical data about the city's considerations and approval of this area. Moving forward, this is one of six specific plans that have been approved in the city. And while most of them are primarily fully developed, we certainly have other development activity happening throughout the city. And we thought we would be better served, and the City Council would be better served, if we expanded that and talked about, you know, things that were happening citywide. So tonight, we're going to continue, again, in an abbreviated fashion, just giving a few highlights of those things that are happening in the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan. But moving forward, we'd like to give you a broader picture about things that are happening throughout the community. We certainly get questions about it from you, from the community, from stakeholders, and we felt that that was a better way to reflect kind of this whole-city approach. So just a few highlights. This is again, kind of capturing the last six-month period from October 1st of 2024 to March 31st, so that 180-day or six-month period. The City Council and the Planning Commission approved several large lot maps, and I think this is notable, because most of the development activity that we've seen in this master-planned community has been largely to the east side of East Bidwell, up towards Eldorado County. And what we have seen is an interest in taking kind of large land ownership and creating the parcels that will eventually come forward for development. But in order for those to be sold and for them to move forward, they had to go through this large lot map process, which is the same process that we went through for other areas of the development that are east of East Bidwell Street. And this is important, because sometimes this happens incrementally and in a phased action over time. And it was a little bit surprising, you know, for us to see how much interest there was in moving a lot of these areas forward. And so you certainly saw a lot of these details in the actions that came before you, but I'm showing you kind of a comprehensive exhibit of all those map areas that have now been, where parcels have been created on paper. And they go through a process that Rebecca's going to talk about in a little bit. One other slide of planning highlights is just, this City Council has been asking for, you know, a wider range of housing choices throughout the city. And I think there have been some notable housing projects that have been approved or proposed over this last six-month period that include both condos and townhomes. And I wanted to call that out to you, because that's something you've certainly been asking for, and I think the market and the developers are starting to deliver, you know, on those types of things. And so we're working through that with them. And then finally, I want to highlight a couple of pre-application and other items that are noteworthy, and you will certainly see more information or activity on this front moving forward. But what's identified initially as the Metal Shop, or more recently called Folsom Ranch Sports Complex, is the combination of a concept for ice hockey, ice rinks, and soccer, covered soccer complex. And we've been talking about that process and project moving forward with a formal application on the northeast corner of Prairie City Road and Alder Creek Parkway. And from the applicant's perspective, they will, they're planning to submit that application formally to us this month. We also approved through the Planning Commission, and the Dignity Health, or Common Spirit, is now kind of referred to as Folsom Ranch Medical Center, there on the northeast corner of Alder Creek Parkway and East Bidwell. And you see the UC Davis Hospital under construction, but Dignity Health has been moving forward with site work, and they had modifications to their phasing plan that were approved by the Planning Commission over this last six-month period. We expect them to be moving forward with their Phase 1 building permit in the coming months, following that site work. And then finally, we have started work on the grant that was awarded to the city as an RT City of Folsom Partnership for a Caltrans grant to study the opportunity for a bus route that would be kind of the first transit service down into this area of our city, primarily focused on Alder Creek Parkway and Iron Point Road. And that's a collaboration with all of the medical services that are being provided in those areas. And the goal would be to get a route going that would go and meet up at the Iron Point Light Rail Station and provide service. So that work is well underway, and we're getting a lot of enthusiasm. I'm receiving emails about other people who have heard about it and now want to know how they can participate in the process, because we're going to be looking for ways that we can help... because we're going to be looking for ways that we can help, uh, kind of supplement the funding for, um, for this type of, of service in the future. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Neves to talk about engineering and building highlights. And we coordinated our colors tonight.
Thank you, Pam. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, uh, thank you for having me, it's great to see you all. Um, I'll briefly cover the mapping and current upcoming construction and building activity in the plan area, including some other miscellaneous projects of interest, and as we move into this year's construction season. So, since our last update, we've seen mapping activity making its way west, and Pam did a great job of highlighting the most recent notable mapping entitlements, all of which have now been submitted and are in for review with the Engineering Division. The parcel merger map for Cendaro is progressing well, and that's the condominium project that Pam mentioned, and we anticipate it recording in the very near future, creating one parcel for the development of 136 condominium units. Additionally, Council may recall, at its last meeting, the agenda item approving the recordation of Toll Brothers Phase 2D subdivision final map. That map has since recorded, establishing the single-family lots, and in June, we anticipate bringing to you the Phase 2C final map, which will complete the mapping in the Toll Brothers Development, also known as Regency at Folsom Ranch. Although the large lot mapping activity tied to Town Center North, Alder Creek West, and Hillsborough, Area 40 Large Lot Map, don't allow for development activity just yet, it's important to note that these maps are creating the parcels consistent with the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan that will ultimately allow for future development. I'll briefly touch on some of the active construction projects in the plan area. The model complex at Cendaro is under construction, as well as the Atwell Apartments, and we anticipate the South Point Commercial Center will begin construction this summer. Home building continues in Phase 2 and Phase 3 of Toll's Regency at Folsom Ranch. Construction continues at the UC Davis Medical Center site, and Engineering has received the civil improvement plans for Alder Creek Marketplace, which is the future home of the plan area's first grocery store. The city has also received civil plans for the Phase 1 of the Dignity Common Spirit Site, and the Independence at Folsom Ranch multi-family project is near approval and will be starting construction this spring. Russell Ranch Villages 2 and 5 are also under construction, and the biggest area of activity is at Folsom Heights. The pre-construction meeting was held this morning, and we're looking forward to that project progressing. As you can see, there's a lot of activity from Engineering. We spend a lot of our time implementing conditions on the site work and ensuring that improvements are built to city standards before we accept them as city-owned facilities. As it is for all development projects, once the civil improvements are completed and final maps are recorded, creating the single-family lots, this will allow the project to pull building permits as the next step in the process. Another form of construction activity I'd like to highlight is the construction of the trails in the plan area, both led by our development partners and our Awesome Parks Department. 2025 year is the year of trails in Folsom Plan Area. Within Regency at Folsom Ranch, Toll Brothers will be putting in several trail segments out to bid this month. Each of the trail segments you see here were conditioned to be ref graded as part of the development projects. They are funded through pooled SPIF fees and reimbursed through a development agreement. Phase 1 of the trails, shown here in blue, was completed earlier this year. Phase 2, shown in pink, Phase 4, shown in yellow, and Phase 5, shown in purple, will be constructed this year, completing nearly 2 miles of new trails and delivering a total of nearly 3 miles of trails overall in the Regency community, located on the west side of East Bidwell in the plan area. On the east side of the East Bidwell in the plan area, our own Parks Department will be putting out to bid the Mangini Ranch Phase 1 Trails, constructing nearly 2.3 miles of trails. This impact fee-funded project is bidding this month and will start construction this summer. I'd like to give a huge shout-out to Kelly Gonzalez and the Parks Department for their work on Prospector Park and this upcoming Mangini Trails Project. We're grateful for the work they do in service to our community and improving the quality of life in Folsom. Building permit activity over the past, uh, six months has included issuance of 428 building permits, and we closed out 2024, having issued 861 building permits total, staying fairly consistent from 2023 and a slight increase from 2022. 2024 also marked the milestone of 10,000-plus residents that we have welcomed to the plan area and into our beautiful Folsom community. In our last update, we highlighted the CFD 18 Phase 2 Water Improvements Project, and in this update, I'm happy to report that the city has made significant progress in construction. This project will provide the new water main line feed and connection to the Folsom Plan Area from the city's water treatment plant. Thanks to the good work of our EWR Department, Marcus and his dedicated staff have done a great job on the project, and especially Nathan Stites, who is serving as the city's project manager with support from the departments. Also, since our last update, we've been able to welcome the newly constructed Prospector Park, which is being thoroughly enjoyed as a community asset for our residents citywide and as the hosting spot for Earth Day. And you haven't lived until you've tried the dueling zip lines out there. Thank you, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Rebecca or Pam?
I need an octopus question, can you go back a couple of slides?
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
So, so there used to be a little piece of sidewalk missing right in here. Do you happen to know if it got filled in?
They have been extended, yeah, there was a gap between their property and the right-of-way where ours connected.
Yeah, to get to the bike trail down here.
Yes, um, that particular spot, I'm not 100% sure. However, I do know that they've been extending those areas of the trail, specifically on Phase 4 and Phase 5, which is the yellow and the purple. And, uh, th- those two have basically bridged that gap, but I can confirm and get back to you, too.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just a small detail question, may or may not know it. Um, I see the, this is the right slide, by the way, um, so, thank you, Mike. Um, this is for the trails, but are there, also, is it also inclu- I don't know why I can't spike, speak, but it's coming. Um, are there trees and landscaping planned around these trails for shade? Um, so it kind of looks like south, north of 50?
Um, so, there has been some plantings, yes, as part of their mitigation efforts as well, too. There's some mitigation areas that are specifically protected as a requirement of the project in their environmental document. Um, so, the short answer is yes, and I will say that a lot of these areas also retained their natural grades, too. You'll notice, um, I'll use, uh, Phase 4 as the example here, let's see here.
That's yellow.
Which is the yellow one. So, this area right here is considered open space, and it's a natural preserve, so that has retained its original, um, environmental components. So, trees, streams, hills, et cetera.
And is there only one connection to north of 50, um, on a trail? Um, so, these aren't, like, if I'm coming from north of 50 from, like, Broadstone, and I'm on a tra- one of the Trolle Creek Trail or whatever, um, if I don't want to get on a road, um, is there only one way to, to stay on a trail and not get on a road? To get over to south of 50?
No, there's a couple of ways, um, there's, let's see if I can go back here. Actually, this one might be a good one. So, part of it also is, um, up Old Placerville Road. There's a trail segment that goes and connects underneath, uh, Highway 50 there. And then, there's obviously, um, some segments coming in from, from East Bidwell. Um, but as far as the major connection in terms of north-south, um, I would say that it's pretty limited to those two right there.
Okay, thank you.
And the, the Placerville Road one, it's a little bit challenging because you've got the road, the railroad track, and the Caltrans columns that are literally holding up the freeway. And, uh, we, we did ask the PUC for permission to put a bike trail closer to the, the railroad tracks than would normally be allowed, but Caltrans, um, has insisted on fully engineered plans before they'll decide if we're allowed to encroach on their space. So, that's, I think, kind of where we are right now.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one silly request, and I don't know if this is for community development or public works, but, um, you know, bef- uh, before you dig, 211 or whoever it is comes out and puts all these little flags for, um, there's a gas line, there's a water line, you know, whatever. Those flags always seem to stay even when the construction is done. And, for example, um, across the street from Fire Station 34 on the northwest corner, at one point, there was kind of a telephone pole there that I think was doing some electricity or whatever when it was under construction. Well, Fire Station's done, but all those flags remain. And I would just like somebody who knows whether the project is done or not to just go pick up all those things south of 50.
We can, we can certainly help with that, especially as it relates to encroachment permits that is with community development. If it, if there's a public works project, um, I know Mark's staff is, um, you know, able to provide that direction, but we're happy to support in any way we can. That's, um, I would say that's kind of a punch list item for us, too, on some subdivisions.
Okay.
So, um, but we, I will certainly follow up with that, and I can follow up with you later.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Barbara, do you have a question, Councilmember?
Yeah, um, this is in follow-up to, um, Councilmember Rorba's, uh, question about the trees along the trail, and this is something that came up several years ago when I was on the Planning Commission, and that was about, uh, planting mitigation trees along those trails and along those drainage areas. And one of the issues was that there is not irrigation supplied to those areas in general, so that some areas where other trees already exist, you know, they've clearly found their own groundwater source. Um, but I think it's, uh, it would behoove us to continue to try and work with the developers to see if they can't extend some irrigation and, and, um, and, and make an effort to put more shade along those trails because it's very sunny and very hot down there in the summer.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, we can certainly work with them on that.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Okay, this takes you to your consent calendar, and you have no request to pull any items.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rathel.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
And Akino.
Yes, thank you, and those of you from Natomas Station, thank you very much for your patience. That takes us to our next item.
It does. Item number nine is Resolution Number 11341. This is a resolution declaring results of the Natomas Station Maintenance Assessment District, Number 2025-1 ballot proceedings, and abandoning district formation proceedings. Come on down, Jameson.
Good evening, Jameson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Let me pull up a PowerPoint real quick.
I got you.
You got me, okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, I'm here to, uh, present on the Natomas Station ballot proceedings. Uh, so, the total ballots distributed were 1,375, and the, uh, ballot proceeding failed with 49.65% in favor and 50.35% in opposition. Uh, it was within 1% and within $1,000 in the weighted, uh, value. And then, so I just wanted to touch on the assets that are maintained within the district. So, this is, the yellow line is the district boundary, and then, within the district, the Lighting Landscape District maintains a little over nine acres of open space, a little over nine acres of irrigated landscape, as well as two mini-parks and, uh, many other assets within there, including sound walls, monument signs, 21 pieces of artwork, uh, mini-irrigation controllers, backflows, and streetlight service pedestals. Uh, this is just a little graph showing the assessment rate of 9170, which has been static since 1990, when this, uh, assessment district was created. And just based off of the Consumer Price Index, that 9170 would need to be 252 to provide the same buying power today. Uh, the California Construction Cost Index, uh, they didn't start tracking the increases until, I believe, it was '94. Um, so, that one doesn't quite jump up as high, but it is still telling a very similar story. Uh, so, what was proposed for this assessment district? Uh, the current rate is $7.64 a month, uh, per single family. And then, the average proposed rate was $21.54 per single-family home. Uh, and there was a range based off of benefit received by each individual parcel, and that range was between $15 a month and $30 a month. And this is just some of the existing conditions, some of the things that we're hoping to, uh, be able to take care of. So, all of the sound walls, the paint and the stucco are wearing off. This one here, you can see the cinder block under that stucco. Um, it's going to start chipping off and falling out. And then, uh, we have many redwood trees planted in close proximity to walls. Those will need to come out at some point, uh, before they start damaging the walls and causing, uh, a very large-ticket item to fail. Uh, some other conditions, the trees and the small landscape strips are affecting the sidewalks, as well as not being able to do appropriate tree maintenance, uh, and remove mistletoe, which is taking over a lot of those mature trees along Turnpike and Natomas Station Drive. Again, this is just some sycamore roots and just showing how, how aggressive they are with the sidewalks, and they're starting to kind of form over the sidewalks. And then, so, uh, we are looking at potential service level reductions. Uh, they are currently running to deficit, and we will need to reduce the services to, uh, respect the vote and live within the means of the budget and the revenue that is being provided. So, uh, some areas that will be cut back are landscape watering. We're looking at reducing the watering by 10 to 30%. Uh, however much we can reduce it while still keeping the trees alive. Um, the mowing will re- be reduced by 80% or more. Fertilization, weed control, and shrub pruning will need to be eliminated. And the district will not have funds to replace damaged assets such as walls, fences, shrubs, art, and landscape lighting. So, anything aesthetic, uh, will not be able to be replaced. We'll have to focus our energies on hazard mitigation and making sure that the area is safe. And then, the next steps, uh, staff will continue to evaluate the priorities and explore potential adjustments to service levels. Uh, we will engage with the community to understand their priorities and discuss potential solutions to address the ongoing maintenance needs. Uh, we will be providing updates to the residents as more information becomes available. And, uh, we do hope to have a public meeting in the next 30 to 45 days to, uh, let the residents know what to, what to expect, what kind of, uh, service levels will be able to be funded in the next coming fiscal year. And if there appears to be enough community support at some point, uh, staff will present information to the City Council to consider going out for a new assessment district in the future. And that concludes my presentation. My contact information is here, should anyone at home, uh, or anyone who sees this PowerPoint have any questions, please reach out to me. And then, we also have a fact sheet on the Lighting Landscape Committee website uh, that has a lot of information for the residents of that community. I'm happy to ask.
Thank you, Jameson, I'm going to go to public comment first. We have three members of the public who'd like to address the council.
Okay, our first speaker will be Tracy McKinney, who will be followed by Wes Jager. So, as Tracy makes her way down, Wes, you can be ready, knowing that you will be next on deck.
Welcome.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Jameson. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm sure you'll understand, um, disappointment in this result. I'm one person here, but I represent a handful of my neighbors that couldn't be here, um, who have lived in Natomas Station since its beginning. Um, this is, uh, very devastating. Um, and, um, we have a lot of opinions on potential things that maybe could have gone better in this process. When something is left as it is for over 30 years, people don't remember. People don't know what is happening. I can't tell you how many people told me, oh, the city takes care of that. The city takes care of that. They don't understand the Lighting and Landscape District. So, I feel like we failed in educating the community better for those that are new, for those that have been around but have forgotten. But I don't want to go over a litany of things that are my opinion of what could have been done better, but I do have some questions, and Jameson did touch a little bit on those, so bear with me. Um, but one of the things is, um, it was very concerning to me that, um, we've been, our community has been allowed to have a deficit to this point of $620,000. That deficit... At that point, we were already 300, over $300,000 deficit spending. I feel that that number contributed a significant value to what we had to add to the cost to keep our neighborhood just up to par, right? We have to pay back that debt. I point that out more as an item of learning for the city and for the staff because I feel there might be other communities that might find during this place that budgets need to be reviewed. You know, one year might be a blip, but there are patterns in spending, right? And we should have known, and things should have been done sooner.
Tracy, about 30 seconds. So if you want to give me your questions, we'll have Jameson come back up with the deck.
Very good. My main question, one question was around the budget. When a new budget will be developed, because obviously we don't have the money that we thought we had to spend. And so I'm curious about how that deficit will be repaid and what will be left because we're already spending about a third of our budget on water and electricity. And then lastly, I would like to know what are the next steps? It sounds like there's going to be some meetings. Maybe the community can rally together and get that done. So I just was curious about what could happen next, what could be those next steps. I don't want this to be the end. Our neighborhood, we love it.
Thank you.
And we don't want it to become a neglected part of the city.
Thank you. We appreciate the feedback, and when we're done with the public comment, I'm going to have the city manager address your comments, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker will be Wes Jigur, and Wes will be followed by Kevin Goddard.
Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name's Wes Jigur. My wife, Kimmy Easterling, and I have lived in Natomas Station in the Woodbridge Development for 30 years, since it was built. The walls were not open yet. We had deer roaming through. So we've been around a while. We've watched it. And, you know, the Landscape and Lighting District, initialled like with any new development, was very nice and shiny, and just like what's happening down in south of 50. And unfortunately, these projects are constrained by the tax requirements that the city must comply with. And actually, I thought the approach the city was taking was quite, was really good in the event that it was tagged to track with the expenditures. And if expenditures, if we were to have achieved the new funding, would have not increased because it would have been CPI indexed with a cap for years that it needed increased funding, but it would not increase for years that it would, that it was, you know, everything was done within budget. So I thought that was a good approach. I did check also the CPI going back to 1990. We moved in in 1990, well, technically '93. The community, things, and much of Natomas Station was already built out. But I would say this, the city's done some great things on the, along the school area where they've put, where the median was put in to do traffic calming. And it's, I've gotten comments over the years when friends and family come to visit, they really admire the neighborhood. But over time, with, as you saw the pictures of the walls, and they've just been neglected. And so we were enthusiastic in the hearings we went to. It seemed like, especially the members off of Turnpike and so forth, we thought it would go well. But as with anything with tax, people don't appreciate the benefit of what they're paying for. And I would really be interested to know, I would be interested to see the viewpoint from an appraiser as to how they factor in a nice community that's with landscaping and so forth when they're looking at home value, or they're looking just only at that home itself. But anyway, my two questions were, one in vain, one in the vein of the previous speaker is, you know, it was so close, there was a five vote, lost by five votes, and there was a six invalid votes. And then, of course, we were less than 40%. So I certainly would like to know how soon that we could proceed forward with another stab at this because I thought it was the right approach. And then one last question, or two other questions. One is the LLD here that we're currently under, subject to the requirements of AB 1452, which was approved by the legislature in 2023, which is going to mandate removal of nonessential turf. And I'm assuming those back-on treatment areas where there is lawn may require removal, which will mean you'll be needing to put in a zero scape. And that will be incumbent upon the city.
What's the last question, Wes?
The last question is, what would be an outcome in the event that this continues to even get worse? I mean, can the city require abandonment of those properties and force it back onto the HOA, like the outside, along Black Diamond is owned by the city, is dedicated on our map, and along Natomas Station, there's a parcel out there that's landscaped, and you can see those walls? So that's really my question.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the feedback.
Okay, next speaker is Kevin Goddard.
Hi, thank you very much, Mayor. City council members and city staff, my name is Kevin Goddard. My wife and I and my son, we live in Natomas Station, and we've lived in Folsom for a little over 10 years. When we looked at Folsom as a place to raise our family, we looked at everything, and obviously it has all the things that check the boxes. Natomas Station checked the boxes for us as a family. So we were excited to move in there and then bought a home. We didn't understand the LNL, what that meant, how it was attached to anything else. Just we figured property taxes pay for property things, and then taxes go to pay for stuff that are nearby. Learned about the LNL, looked at the fee, we were like, oh, $91 a year. Well, that must take care of whatever is necessary for the area because I haven't heard anything else about it. Until we found out, due to a CD meeting, that it was actually well-underfunded and how the previous presentation showed that it is nowhere even close where it needs to be. So we were excited when we said, hey, the city is looking at it, we're going to put a ballot measure, and we're going to take a stab at bringing this up to at least make it where it makes sense with inflation and costs so that we can pay for what we have. And when you learn that we're in debt, I don't like to be in debt. If we can pay it back, even better. So that was a great idea. Well, it didn't pass, as we saw with this. I don't think that people understood it, though, because I took my own perspective when I learned about it. It was because it took me effort to understand it. And when we went around and we talked to our neighbors about it and said, hey, the LNL, you know, did you hear about this? What's going on? They're like, oh, yeah, our taxes pay for it. They didn't understand, so we had to educate them about the LNL, about the district, and how it has its special privileges, and that you're paying for the area that you live in, and that's why it's a valuable thing. So I've already reached out to Brian, and he got back to me within a very short period of time, so I appreciate that. And helped answer the questions, and just like the other ones that asked the questions that I had the same thing. And I think your presentation did a good job showing kind of what it is. What was frustrating is that the efforts that were made to educate people and bring it up to speed and so that you could understand what was going to happen if the vote didn't pass, I don't think that was there because people figured that, oh, well, it'll just get taken care of, whatever. It just will stay the same, so I don't have to worry about it. You don't have to build new things, whatever. I don't think they realized that this was the consequences, that this is what we're going to be looking at, and all of a sudden, we're going to start seeing that. So I think that's going to be an important thing to communicate. I'm excited to have a community meeting and that you're acknowledging that, and that we'll have an effort to reengage you. So thank you for your time, and yeah, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do you want to address these questions?
Yes, please.
Starting with the deficit and how we're going to budget going forward?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the speakers who have come to speak on this. Jameson and his support team have been working really hard on this, and I think his presentation tonight articulated some of the challenges that we have with the limited budget. One of the messages I would like to send out is, it's a privilege for me to be here to be your city manager, and I didn't come here to watch things degrade, right? Our goal is to come together to find a way that we can make things better, right? I mean, we want renewal and replacement to occur so that those families that have been there for a long period of time, those families that have just recently moved in, that they will be able to experience the amenities that those who moved in there right from the beginning experienced. So we're not going to give up. And so I appreciate Jameson and the folks from the Parks Department, and I plan to attend this public meeting as well, where we can talk about what the community wants. Because in many ways, what comes next depends on what the residents want. And I appreciate, you know, Kevin sent me an email where he kind of had some feedback on our process going forward, and I really appreciated that and take that to heart, that there are areas where we probably can do better, and we will. So answering some of the questions, what's next? And this is not necessarily for Natomas Station, this is for the entire city of Folsom budget, is we are going to build budgets where we live within our means. And so in order to do that, we're going to have to tell everyone what that means. You know, the impact's positive or negative, but I think it's important because the solutions are going to come from the community and from the staff and the council working together to figure out what is that best fit. And so this, I think, you know, we're disappointed in the outcome of this ballot, but I think in many ways it enables us to focus a little more, not just on Natomas Station, but we do have other lighting and landscape districts that we're going to have to have that outreach and discussion, too, and to what the speakers talked about, to educate them of what that means. And some of it is just basic fundamental math and inflation. So you can't expect something that was assessed in 1988 or 1990, wherever it was, to go forward for 30 years and not increase and expect the same level of service. And so I think in some ways, we missed an opportunity to educate folks that that's our reality. You know, so that's some of the message that we'll have to communicate. Because if you were just to call someone today and say, hey, how much would it cost for you to maintain even a small front yard? It's not going to be $7 a month, right? I mean, so those are things that I think if we put it in that perspective, the neighbors and others will understand, it's like, oh, wait a second. So you're just saying for, you know, 20 bucks a month, I can get this? And so that's part of the messaging. So I think it's important moving forward related to, because there's some fixed charges in their water and lights, that's before you do really any other maintenance. And so those are things that, as we build the budget, we'll communicate to the community of what that looks like. There are opportunities, we'll explore any opportunities. If there's areas that individuals want to adopt or whatever, we'll consider that. It's not ideal, but I guess the ideal would be at some point in time, we'd be able to communicate this, have another ballot, and have a different outcome. And that's still a possibility. Let's see.
Do you know how soon you can do another election?
Can you remind me, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. City Manager. There's no time cap, so it can actually happen anytime. But having said that, there is a typical 45-day timeframe, there's a process we have to go through whenever we start a process. So it's just up to the community to decide what they want. If the community wants to have another attempt at it, we can do it anytime. The council can authorize anytime.
Is there, is there a point at which we could no longer use the most current engineer's report, and we would have to pay for another engineer's report?
Every time. Every time.
Oh, even if we had another election in 45 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. And one of the reasons, because I asked that question as well, is, you know, I'm trying to relocate to Folsom, so I'm looking at, you know, houses for sale, for rent, whatever it is. And so I've been watching, I mean, there's homes for sale now in Natomas Station, so you have to actually go out and pull the property records to make sure we have an accurate vote. But I think if there's any message I want to the Natomas Station community is, is we recognize that time is of the essence. There's some urgency behind what we're trying to do, not just for Natomas Station, but the other lighting and landscape districts and just the budget at large. I mean, we understand that we are in a race to get things to where they need to be.
Okay. And then, I don't know if you know this, Brian, or maybe Jameson, but there was a question about nonessential turf, which we know that's a mandate from the state, right?
Yes, so there's a state mandate to remove nonessential turf. Right now, the all turf that doesn't have a tree on the same valve has already been turned off throughout all the lighting and landscape districts and community facilities districts. So without doing a complete new irrigation system within any of these areas, we can't separate the trees from the turf strips. So there's not a great way to do those ones with trees in them currently, especially in Natomas Station.
Okay. And to the last question, we don't have any plans to abandon any of this property. We're just hoping that at some point, maybe we can go back to the voters for...
That's our ideal, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Jameson or the city manager?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, Jameson. And, you know, we talked about deferred maintenance, repair, and replacements of things that are damaged, not functioning well, you know, like the walls, the streetlights and all of that. Do you have any kind of an estimate of what the amount, what it would cost to actually put everything in the shape it was in when we started there 30 years ago? Or, you know, or upgrade things? I think there was a suggestion at one point about replacing the streetlights with LED because it's more, it's less costly and more efficient.
Yes. So we do have, within each lighting and landscape district, you have a maintenance and improvement plan, which lays out the short term, which is one-to-five-year projects, and long term, which is out to 30 years for those larger assets such as streetlights, service pedestals, irrigation controllers, things that have a little longer life on them. So the 24-25 maintenance improvement plan for Natomas Station, they should have been putting aside funding every year as part of their regular assessment. So right now, they're nearly $400,000 behind in setting funds aside for those end-of-life replacements on those assets. So what's in the maintenance and improvement plan is approximately $1 million for replacing things like repairing the artwork, doing repainting of all of the walls, replacing a number of streetlights, because we don't expect every streetlight to fail, but having funds set aside to do, let's say, a half dozen streetlights when they fail at end of life. And so right now, the district was behind around $400,000 in putting money aside for that.
Thank you. And, you know, when we talked about the $600,000, that was money that was helping to subsidize what was being collected by the city from the existing residents' contributions over the last several years, so that what the neighborhood is now seeing will be reduced because what we are currently seeing has been subsidized for quite some time in terms of frequency of maintenance, et cetera.
Yes, and Brian may correct me or add some additional context to this, but right now, I have the baseline budget for Natomas Station that I'm working on. And at the reduced level of service that we're currently providing, it is $85,000 beyond the revenue that it is bringing in. So in order to get a balanced budget, I need to reduce it, the maintenance by that $85,000, plus set funds aside to pay back the deficit, so essentially reducing the budget by nearly $100,000 on the maintenance side. For context, your landscape maintenance costs $100,000 and maybe like $101. So that is really, and I can't not maintain streetlights, can't turn the power off to the streetlights, I can't turn the water off. So the landscape maintenance is one of the only areas where we can really cut any more without creating a safety issue.
Thank you. I think that's all my questions. Councilmember Rorba, any questions?
No, I have comments.
Okay, let's, do you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Saw the face.
Yeah, no.
Well, I do just want to address the few people that spoke and our staff, too. Thank you for doing what you could to get this through. I can, I want to encourage you guys to look at this as a positive in some sort of a way. There's a lot more awareness here than there was before, and I think several of you spoke to that. And I appreciate what I heard from our city manager about the accountability and the leadership that we can have going forward, and I want you to know that you guys will have our support on this. I think the message was very clear from Brian that he didn't come here to watch things deteriorate. So this is, there's going to be a new opportunity, I think, to bring more awareness, and I appreciate as well that he spoke to the broader budget in a whole. And what Tracy had said was she's concerned about our patterns of spending. What this has done for me is educated us as well, that this was a real problem, which I was not aware of. I've had a lot of questions the last two and a half years about... I've had a lot of questions the last two and a half years about our budget and where our expenses are going, where the spending seems to be, where we're not, where there seems to be a lack of accountability for our spending. So I think this is just an example of sometimes when a spotlight gets shined in a negative situation, that there's a lot of positive things that can come out of it. So I do see that there are positive steps that we're going to be able to take going forward. And if another tax measure or assessment is what you guys are wanting to do, I think you're going to see a bigger turnout than 40% for sure. So I encourage you guys to look at this as positive. Our city staff and with the leadership of our new city manager is going to do everything they can to make sure they're going to hear your concerns, answer your questions, and take the appropriate steps to go forward to make sure that your property values stay where they should be, if not even increase them. And I think what I'm hearing from the council, but I'll speak only for myself, but I think that several would share it, is that we're going to be behind you, too, to make sure that you guys are in safe hands, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski?
My question was just about options other than a landscaping and lighting district. And maybe that's for the city attorney, could be for the engineering department. But is Natoma Station forever sentenced to live with a lighting and landscaping district? Or could they form a, take it over as a homeowners association or some other entity?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Kozlowski. It is certainly an option for the city council to dissolve the LNL district and hand it over to the private sector, to the HOA, where the neighbors decide what they want with respect to their own HOA community. But it also, it depends on what the community wants. So if community would rather do it themselves, that's certainly an option for the city. And we've done that in the past, in a very, very limited situation, by working with the HOA to just let the HOA handle those matters. Because sometimes they can get the cost cheaper than the city can because of the government, but sometimes cannot because of economic, of scale. So it depends. But those are definitely options.
Very good. You hit the nail on the head that I was looking for, which is, this is a question for the community, answer for themselves. It's not one where we're trying to dictate some future state. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Raythel? Hold on a second. Vice Mayor Raythel?
I'd just like to say, you know, maybe we have the makings of a dark sky initiative here in Natoma Station. You know, the one thing, I lived in El Dorado Hills for five years before I moved to Folsom. And one of the things I really appreciated about the El Dorado Hills community was being able to see the stars at night. So I would push back a little bit on the idea that we need a streetlight on, or multiple streetlights on every street. I think it's something that the community should discuss. There are many other communities that are out there that don't have as many streetlights as we have. I personally prefer landscaping over streetlights. I think we have too many in my own neighborhood, so I think it's worth discussing as a community, whether we need all of those streetlights, especially if they're, you know, going to be phased out or outdated, you know, going to be replaced at some point in the future. But that's up to the community to decide in that discussion. Really, my question, and it doesn't necessarily need to be answered tonight, is I'm kind of shocked that we let it go on as long as we did here in that community. I think it has contributed. I think the comments that were made about letting them run in arrears for multiple years, you know, you've addressed it and you've said, hey, we're not going to do this in the future anymore. But I would like to see how many of other LNLs are in this situation as part of the budget process. So we start educating those communities now, and they start seeing those service cuts get phased in in a slower format than more, you know, this seems like a very big cliff that this community is going to experience, and a cliff that we have generated versus living within those means and shuttling down services as we ran out of money or as those services became more expensive. Instead of a taper down, it's turned into a very large cliff, which is going to be abrupt for the community. So understanding which of our other communities may be looking at this cliff with a change in our policy or approach to these would be very helpful for me.
Councilmember Leary?
Yeah, thank you for getting back to me. And I really appreciate the effort that our new city manager has put into this. We've had some discussions about concerns that were brought to me by other members of the community. And it is, it is a disturbing situation. We have 30 lighting and landscaping districts in Folsom, and seven have actually passed an increase. This is the first one that failed, but there are others that are due for the same kind of evaluation. But one thing I wanted to bring up about the suggestion about having a homeowners association and HOA, there is not an HOA for the entire area of Natoma Station at this time. There are three developments in there with single-family homes that have HOAs that pay for the internal, you know, maintenance of those communities, but not for the landscaping strips and the sound walls. Many years ago, we looked at what it would take to establish an HOA, and the information I got from the city attorney at the time, who was not Mr. Wong, was that we would have to have 100% vote from landowners in the community to go forward with that. And I don't know if the rules on that have changed, but that is something, you know, that would require a significant amount of research to find out how we could establish one, and how that might affect the existing smaller communities, smaller members of communities HOA that exist right now.
So you're saying we got a chance?
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying we have a lot of work to do. Okay.
I wasn't suggesting it would be easy, just an option.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 11341?
So moved.
I will second. We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Thank you all very much for coming out last meeting and this meeting. Please keep your eyes and ears open for news about the upcoming community meeting, and we will hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay, and your next item this evening is new business, item number 10, related to the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor JPA Updated Joint Powers Agreement. You have two resolutions before you tonight, resolution number 11352 and resolution number 11353.
Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor Aquino.
We've got the whole Neves family here.
Yes. Members of city council, Ryan Neves, senior engineer in the Public Works Department, here to give you a brief presentation related to the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor Joint Powers Authority agreements and the two resolutions before you. So again, very brief history of the JPA, was formed in October 1991. Member agencies were Sacramento Regional Transit, City of Folsom, and the counties of Sacramento and El Dorado. And one of the main purposes was to acquire the rail corridor, about 53 miles of rail corridor from, from City of Sacramento to the City of Placerville. And that acquisition was completed in 1996. This map shows the limits of the JPA corridor, starting at the 65th Street overpass in Sacramento to the west and continuing up into El Dorado County and the City of Placerville on the east. The jurisdictional boundaries are denoted in black. And there, as you can see in blue, is the City of Rancho Cordova. One of the main reasons for the proposed amendments to the JPA agreement is to add the City of Rancho Cordova as a member agency. They are not a member agency currently, and partly because when the JPA was formed, they were not an incorporated city. The structure of the JPA is that there's five members. Each of the four member agencies appoints a board member, and the fifth is identified as a public at-large member, which is currently held and has historically been held by the City of Rancho Cordova. Upon completion of the acquisitions of the rail corridor, the JPA adopted policies for moving forward largely to conduct the administration and maintenance of the corridor, to maintain it and facilitate uses, transportation uses through the corridor. Historically, the member agencies have financially contributed $27,500 to the JPA, and that amount has not changed since the original funding agreement was executed. But it should be noted in the proposed budget for the JPA for fiscal year 2526, there's a slight increase, which would be the first, to $29,200. So the main purposes, again, for amending the Joint Powers Authority agreement and the continuing agreement to advance funds to the JPA are largely to add the City of Rancho Cordova as a member agency, to clean up old language from the original agreements that just no longer apply, and to increase the maximum allowed contribution limit to $35,000 per member agency. And this would obviously apply to the new member City of Rancho Cordova as well. So that's it. We're recommending that you adopt the resolutions noted on the screen. If you do have any questions, besides myself, Brett Ballinger from the City's Parks and Rec Department is here, and he serves as the deputy CEO of the JPA. So if you have any questions, I'm sure we can answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Neves?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
I have one question about that corridor, and that's basically the rail line that runs from Rancho Cordova on up through Placerville. And that, the only use that it's currently getting is for the excursion train when it gets east of Folsom? Is that correct?
So there's, I guess, a natural trail project that extends east in El Dorado County. And so previously, the city council did approve the license agreement for within the City of Folsom for PSVRR to operate. However, we're waiting for some clearance from the Federal Rail Authority on the track condition issues. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
El Dorado County also runs their own excursion train called the El Dorado Western Railroad.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski, did you have something to add?
That corridor is used by light. That corridor is used by light rail coming to Folsom from Sacramento.
That section, I was referring to the section between Folsom and El Dorado Hills. Thank you.
All right, we have no public requests to speak, so I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 11352.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
I'll also move, did we do both together?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, I'll also move resolution number 11353 for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Next item, please.
Okay, your last item this evening is new business, item number 11. This is resolution number 11355, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bob Murray and Associates for executive recruitment services for the Public Works Director.
Good evening, Allison.
Good evening.
For the Public Works Director or for a Public Works Director?
The agenda says for the. We'll get into that. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Allison Garcia, your Human Resources Director. The item before you tonight is a request for direction to proceed with contracting an executive search firm to conduct the Public Works Director recruitment. After 27 years at the city, current Public Works Director Mark Rackavan announced his retirement from the City of Folsom effective May 30, 2025. 37 working days left. Who's counting? Exactly. Given the critical nature of the role, the city manager and human resources recommend partnering with an executive search firm to help us attract and retain top-tier talent. These firms offer specialized expertise and the strategic approach necessary to ensure alignment with the city's goals and values while maintaining discretion, efficiency, and best practices throughout the process. Executive recruitment requires industry knowledge, a broad network, and targeted outreach, resources that extend beyond the scope of the city's HR team. By working with a search firm, we gain access to a wider talent pool and benefit from their expertise in executive hiring, discretion in the process, and efficiency, allowing city staff to focus on other core responsibilities while ensuring a successful selection. Human resources evaluated multiple executive search firms, reviewing their qualifications, approach, and pricing. After consulting with each firm, staff recommends moving forward with Bob Murray and Associates. They offer strong regional expertise, a competitive price point, and a proven understanding of public sector recruitment. Their experience and approach make them well-suited to support a successful hire for this key leadership position. In accordance with the Folsom Municipal Code, the contract award limit for the city manager is about $75,000. Although the proposed contract cost falls within the city manager's signature authority, we are bringing this item forward to the council to support our ongoing efforts of transparency and encourage engagement in selecting the next Public Works Director. If council adopts this resolution, staff will proceed with a contract and begin recruitment efforts. This will include meetings with the city manager and stakeholders, so Bob Murray and Associates can gain a full understanding of our values, culture, and the challenges and opportunities facing the department. We also hope to include both community and professional interview panels to ensure a broad range of perspectives are represented in the selection process. They will create the recruitment brochure, implement strategic outreach, conduct evaluations of candidates, perform background and reference checks, and engage with the community and professional stakeholders throughout the process. With that, we respectfully recommend council approves resolution 11355, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bob Murray and Associates for executive recruitment services for the Public Works Director.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Allison? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 11355.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you very much. Happy retirement to Mr. Rackavan. That takes us to city manager reports.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is great to be here and to, wanted to share a little bit about my observations related to the team that I have the privilege of working with. I can't help but recognize the effort, the energy, and the dedication that they put forward on a day-to-day basis to serve this community. And I appreciate their support and patience with me as I get up to speed on the various documents, and more than anything for my constant questions about, hey, where's this? What's that? What's this mean? So really appreciate them. But here's some, I have a variety of updates. The city has secured 3.7 million in federal funding through the Highway Bridge Program to support bridge maintenance projects. The grant made possible by the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act will fund critical repairs at eight bridge locations, including Folsom Lake Crossing and Lake Natoma Crossing. Planned improvements include deck treatments, joint seal repairs, and repainting pedestrian railings. The total estimated project cost is $4.6 million. The federal grant will cover 80%, while the City of Folsom will provide the remaining 20% match. The design is expected to begin in 2026, with construction to follow in 2027. The Historic Train Depot reopens. I was happy to join the debut of the Historic Train Depot at 200 Wool Street. It has been transformed into a multifunctional space featuring office space for the Folsom Historic District Association, a meeting room, and the Peter T. Lewis Green Room. The green room will be for the performers at the amphitheater there. Thanks to the FHDA Board, Board members Jerry Burnow and the community donors for making this project possible. As we've seen on social media and other places, the fire hazard severity zone maps were released. And so it's important to note just fundamentally that this does not have a direct impact on your insurance rates. The California Office of the State Fire Marshal has released updated 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps. These maps classify areas, including parts of Folsom, as moderate, high, or very high fire hazard zones based on vegetation, slope, wind, and weather conditions. The maps are now available for public review and comment. Local agencies must adopt them within 120 days, followed by submission to the state for final approval. These zones support long-term fire planning. They do not assess the risk of fire damage to individual properties. To learn To learn more about this, you can go to our website at folsom.ca.us/firezones. Appreciate our fire chief for his efforts to try to get information out to the public on that. Folsom firefighters welcome new arrival. This is pretty neat. On March 6, Folsom firefighters from Engine 36 and Medic 36 helped deliver a baby boy who arrived earlier than expected. After a safe delivery, both mom and baby were transported to the hospital for continued care. The crew recently had the chance to reconnect with the family. Pretty neat. And then, one of my favorites, quick thinking saves ducklings. Last week on Blue Ravine Road, Animal Control Officer Bradley spotted a mother duck and her ducklings crossing the street. When several ducklings fell through a storm drain, she quickly radioed for ACO Grandin for help. Together, they lifted the grate and safely reunited the ducklings with their grateful mom. Pretty great work from our ACLs. Juvenile party intervention and firearms arrests, another great, more great police work from our police department. On Friday night, officers intervened in a juvenile organized party promoted online, which moved from Rancho Cordova to Cameron Park and ended at the Leeds Dorf parking garage. Thanks to Citizens Tip, officers monitored the area, deterring over 50 vehicles from gathering. During the incident, a juvenile driver fled from officers, leading to a short pursuit. The driver was arrested after officers found open alcohol containers and a loaded handgun. The juvenile was booked into Sacramento County Juvenile Hall. I think it's important to note, there was a well-reported incident, you know, of a party where teenagers had gone into a vacant home. I appreciate the efforts of our police department to be vigilant about this and to be aware that stuff like this may happen again, and so kudos to them. Some community engagement events, announcements, Festival of Eggs at Lemby Park. So please join us on Saturday morning, April 19, at Lemby Park for the annual Festival of Eggs. Enjoy a pancake breakfast, free carnival games, entertainment, vendor displays, hands-on activities, and photos with the bunny, not a bunny, the bunny. And then also for Community Service Day, there's a call for project ideas. So these dates are important. The 12th Annual Community Service Day is set for Saturday, September 20. We're asking our community to submit their project ideas by June 27. But if it's a school-based project, those have a deadline of May 16 prior to school getting out. National Prescription Drug Take Back Day. The Folsom Police Department is partnering with the DEA, excuse me, DEA for National Prescription Drug Take Back Day on Saturday, April 26. From 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Folsom Police Department, community members can safely dispose of unused medications to help keep our community safe. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kozlowski?
The duckling story sounded like the start of a Paul Harvey, like the rest of the story kind of thing.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for that. Nothing to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Raythel?
I want to start by giving a quick shout-out to Eliza Phillip from Vista del Lago. She recently won the Rotary District 5180 speech contest. So she won at her club, which was Folsom Lake Rotary, and then the semifinal, and then went on to the final to win. So she spoke about the magic of service and the nonprofit that she started with her parents, teaching middle school kids how to debate and the life skills that come with communication. So big shout-out to her for really setting a new standard for those folks that are participating in that speech contest. You can find her video out on YouTube. I encourage you to go and watch her and listen to her words because they're very impactful. I also had a chance to judge the Folsom High Architecture Program last week, and that was just an absolute joy. We've got some really talented kids and really talented educators that are helping those kids do some really first-class projects in architecture and design. So we saw everything from ADUs to construction on the moon, all in one day. Really impressive. So just a big shout-out to the Folsom High Architecture Program. I also wanted to give a report out from Saks Sewer. The Harvest Water Program received another grant, this one for $73 million from the Water Storage Investment Program. Another project had pulled out, and Saks Sewer pursued that money that was left on the table from this other project pulling out and was able to bring $73 million back for the Harvest Water Program. So what that means is less cost to all of the ratepayers because this large project, which is a $597 million price tag, is now with the addition of this $73 million grant. It's now 404 million of it is grant-funded. So every grant that's brought home to that program is less that has to come from the ratepayer. So shout-out to Saks Sewer and the Harvest Water Program for that. Also, by the, I participated in the Two by Two with Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. Brian already mentioned Community Service Day, so get those projects in. That form is online now, and the request for proposals is out there. But we also talked briefly about the American River Canyon South and interdistrict transfers and the impact that could have there. So I know Brian is working with San Juan and Folsom-Cordova Unified School District to put together the options for that community and get input along there. So I know the team will continue working on that to make that clear for those residents that would be impacted. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rorba?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I just want to piggyback on what our city manager, Brian, said about the Citizens Tip. So we had two different incidents concerning homes or the big parties that were happening. And the reason the second one got stymied so early was because of that Citizens Tip. So it's important for our community to know that if they hear something, that they should say something, and then our police department can actually be more proactive and prevent big house parties from breaking out. So I just wanted to reiterate that, as always, we want to hear everything that you hear. It helps us keep our community safe and our kids safe. Just want to report out, I was at the conference in Monterey last meeting two weeks ago. We had about 10-plus meetings, all on different opportunities available in Folsom and what we could offer. Intel's property came up quite a bit, lots of questions surrounding that. Have already been able to set meetings and had a couple of meetings with the city manager and interested parties, so we're moving forward in that. Just how do we fill out our retail space that is empty, those areas that need some recognition? So really, just how to keep Folsom thriving and increase our revenue sources. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Leary?
Thank you. I have a little bit of the duckling story to add because I've had to rescue ducklings more than once in my neighborhood because they seem to like some of the local swimming pools in people's backyards. And how it actually ends up working out is the moms will eventually lead the ducklings down the street to the local pond. And if somebody leaves their gate open, last year someone hit one of the mother ducklings, and a number of them went down a grate. And so I went by because a neighbor told me about the incident, and I could hear all the little ducklings crack, you know, quacking away. Ended up pulling up the grate myself and netting the ducklings and getting them to rescue. But that's just for an aside.
Thanks for the softball. Now we know the rest of the story.
How do you know the rest of the story? I can help house the animal control service that's needed. But no, I'm looking forward to Community Service Day. I've led a community service day every year since its inception in various areas, mostly in my neighborhood. And I have a large group, I think, this year that will want to engage in signing up for projects, and will be meeting to put together something that, so we can temporize until we get things on a better trajectory for the future. So, thank you.
And I have no report, so we will adjourn at 8:29. Thank you.